I did it after.
You did it after?
I did.
Nope.
I don't know why.
First, leg is first. Uh, let's see, roll call.
Maloney.
Here.
Ermeling.
Here.
Cronin.
Here.
Feeny.
Here.
Hardinger.
Here.
Wyland.
Here.
Sagami.
Here. All here and present, uh, public comments. I've got a couple of public comments here. Let's see, I've got, uh, the first one I received tonight was, uh, from David Roth. David, you want to come up to the podium? And, uh, state, or you want me just to, can I just read it? Or does he need to come up? You want to speak, David, or you want me just to talk about this one? Yeah, this is the card plate, right?
Yeah.
So David Roth, thirty-four oh six Schofield Avenue, Weston, Wisconsin, uh, seeking an area to play cards, approximately six people. And then you have actually two requests, and I gave the, uh, the formal, um, what is that, would you call that?
Oh, it's a correspondence.
Correspondence, uh, legal correspondence to our clerk. Uh, number two is request class, uh, five, maybe, um, let's see, um, it must be a case number to be dismissed. So I, I don't believe we'll be able to do that here tonight. But, um, going back to one, your request for, uh, playing cards, uh, here in our, our facility. If anybody else on the board wants to go first, I'll go first. I, I don't know where we would stop, Dave. So if, if we said yes to, uh, a group of people playing cards, where do we now say no? Or do we just say yes to everyone? So it, it really isn't set up, uh, like a community type center. You know, maybe when the Green Heck Center, that's more of a community style center is opened up, there might be a spot there for that. But I just don't see a spot here for that, and, uh,
I, I checked all around Wausau area, all around here. And we were over in Schofield. As.
Now Pam, yeah.
I can't.
Sure.
But they're selling the place, so. There's no place around here. Everybody in municipality around us has a place for elderly and disabled vets and so on and so forth, except west.
Yeah, I don't believe that, you know, I, I don't believe that.
Stevens Point?
Yeah.
And Eagle.
Well, that's, that's different, but you said around here. So, I mean, um, you know, Dale's Weston Lanes is open, I'm sure you could play some cards there. And, uh, there's quite a few places here, it doesn't have to be a municipality. You know, we, we don't have the funds to clean up and, and, uh, all the different things, we don't have a community center here. We discussed it for about two years, whether we would have a hall here to rent out. And there's so many private halls around here, you know, we don't want to compete against them. We used to have one at the other, at the other center, at the Village Hall, but that stopped, I don't know, ten, ten years ago, fifteen years ago, probably. Um, I've been here long enough that I, I went to several wedding receptions and, uh, parties and birthday stuff, so. But we, we just don't have the facilities here for it, so I apologize, I'm sorry for that, and, uh.
It never hurts to ask.
Yeah, no, absolutely not. Go ahead, Feeny.
Have, uh, have you checked with the Rothschild Library or the Marathon County Public Library?
Yeah, but they charge it on there. Us veterans and stuff, we pay for nickels, and they want dollars for rent.
Yeah, Denny's Restaurant. VFW.
Elks Club.
Or Log Cabin, you know, on, on off hours, you know, I'm sure they wouldn't want you in there, uh, you know, on, on peak hours, but I don't know when you meet either, so.
We play from twelve-thirty to four.
Yeah, that'd be a little rough, that, that would be a lunch hour time period.
Yeah, that's, for a restaurant, that's a bad time.
Yeah. I'll, I'll tell you what, I, I will promise you that I will keep my ear open, and I'll try to find a spot that says six, uh, people here, so.
Try maybe the YMCA.
Or the YMCA, YMCA, out on Howland. Check it.
They offer, you can sign up. They have one downtown, but they are, they have people playing at the Y down here, because this question has been asked on a number of Facebook groups, um, in the Wausau area, and you just need to contact the senior citizen director down at the Y downtown. They have a group that plays at the Weston Y, and they have scholarship programs that you can sign up for, so, um, I think it's twenty dollars a month for, for, but you can apply, so you just have to show need.
You gotta be a member, twenty dollars a month.
Yeah.
Well, there is a cost for people to, to have people in their facilities.
Yeah. All right, and then on the correspondence, what's happening, we could, um,
That's, uh.
It's a, it's a request for dismissal, I think.
Yep. Just a question. There is a program for senior citizens, they call it Silver Snicker, Sneaker.
What's that?
There is a program, they call it Silver Sneaker.
Still in the catching.
Yeah, Silver Sneaker, right?
Yes. You can use that program to sign up at YMCA without any cost to you.
Yep.
At the Y?
Yep.
Yes.
Tell them you're part of the Silver Sneaker, right?
Yes.
You gotta sign up for it.
You gotta sign up for it, and then there'll be a no cost.
I think it's part of Medicare.
It's part of Medicare, yeah.
You have to have certain supplements.
They are on Medicare.
But you have to have a certain, from what I heard, because this is discussed in that whole thread that I was looking at on this, that certain supplements don't potentially have that, so you have to look to see what kind of Medicare you have.
Right, for years, I had.
It is a valid hope.
It is available. And she wasn't going to turn anyone away, the, the director was on there saying that she would work with people to, to allow them to.
That program, they can use Y for anything.
Right, yep.
Okay, all right, on that piece.
I think that letter that was submitted relative to a prior case that was, um, heard in the circuit court, and there was a decision made, would need to come up, uh, future agenda.
Okay. So you want, do you want that on the agenda, on that, that, you want that, that letter, uh, yeah, a legal letter to be put on the agenda?
Yeah.
All right.
What it is, is I gotta.
No, 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 Dave, Dave, hold it, we'll put that on the February, we'll put that on the February agenda, okay? It'll be the third Monday in a, uh, for the Board of Review.
Third Monday?
Me, a village trustee, third Monday of the month, yep.
At six?
What will that be, no, not the sixth. Yeah, six P M. on the twentieth of February.
Twentieth.
Yep, okay. It'll be on the agenda for you. Okay, thank you.
For twentieth?
Yep. All right, so, uh, the next one I have here is from Jim Penesal, uh, five zero zero two Arrow Street, Weston, uh, gen item number forty-five, do you want to wait for us to get to forty-five?
Please.
Okay, all right. All right, got both of those. And, uh, any more on the public comments, who's controlling the, you with me? Anybody on social media? No hands up, no hands up? Any hands up in the audience here? Uh, any hands up in the audience, any hands up on social last time? All right, no more. Moving to number four, uh, minutes from the previous meetings, uh, twelve nineteen, two thousand twenty-two Board of Trustees meeting.
Who should acknowledge items four and five came currently?
Second.
By Feeny and seconded by Cronin, all those in favor, say aye.
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 Opposed? So Carrie, um, Chris, when are you up?
He's the ordinance.
Huh?
He's the ordinance.
Where?
Thirty-three.
Thirty-three? Do I have the permission to move to thirty-three?
Yes.
Let's take it out of order, okay? So moving to ordinance thirty-three, ordinance number twenty-three dash zero zero one, in ordinance to approve the rezoning of a parcel of land located at twenty-nine hundred Schofield Avenue in the Village of Weston, from B two highway business to B D land development district, and an associated general development plan.
That's your pleasure.
If, if you weren't at the last week's planning commission meeting, uh, this is an outstanding, uh, bill, this is exactly what we're looking for, uh, on Schofield Avenue, it, it's just, I'm, I'm still pumped, I'm very excited about this, I, you can see it on the, on the viewer here, if you didn't see it last week.
I'll make a motion to approve.
All right, and I'll send there, uh, motion by Cronin, seconded by Feeny, any more in discussion?
Just one thing is, I hope, because I know it has to go to the planning committee, but that the apartment building they're proposing, that they take into account the neighbors on across the street, so that they are given some consideration as far as, you know, space and traffic and parking and the whole nine yards.
Okay.
Jen, they would have to.
Forget that.
Has to.
Yeah, that has to come back, but I'm just saying, I know it's a future build unless somebody wants it immediately, but, um, you know, I'm just concerned about the neighbors across.
Yeah, I, I'm not at all, I think it's going to be done extremely well, I actually think if it's, uh, sold after that bank is built, I think it's going to be worth more, it'll be a higher end person in there. I can see, uh, my wife and I in the top fourth floor in a corner, uh, facing, uh, a little bit of southwest, I think that'd be a pretty view, I'm just teasing, of course. All right, so, uh, we have a motion and a second, and just any more in the discussion? Hearing none, all those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? So Carrie, well done, thank you, Chris. Great development. Uh, who else here? Which one, thirty-seven?
Yeah.
Yeah, I'm fine with that. Let's, um, let's also, if I have the board's approval, let's move to unfinished business number thirty-seven. Uh, discussion and possible action on proceeding with resolution for the discontinuance or alteration of the Dominica Street right-of-way south of Mary Lane.
So this is coming back, uh, following, especially being aboard last week, relative to a, um, rescinding of a resolution that was not specific enough to, uh, go forward with a village introduced, uh, proposal to discontinue the right-of-way under the, um, premise of being in the public interest, or what was in the public interest. Plan Commission also heard it that night, uh, from the board's prior referral. Boards, the board's decision was to defer till later from Plan Commission, Plan Commission's recommendation back to the board was to defer with an unspecified or, or no specified timeline. There was correspondence received from East Tappy, um, asking for the, um, discontinuance to not be considered until after the wetlands had been delineated on his, uh, property to the south, that, uh, he is proposing to put forward a development plan at some point, uh, but he does need a wetland delineation prior to that, to understand how access would come to the property. An email that was received from, uh, Joe Lasnuski's attorney, Davis Rundy, who I believe is in the audience tonight, actually did not object to deferral of that, I, intention was to get that email included in the packet tonight, I don't know that it was actually attached. But I guess, correct me if I'm wrong, but there was not an objection to deferring based on the, uh, attorney's, attorney Rundy's email from the Sunday prior, January eighth. So I guess it's decision tonight for the board as to whether they wish to, uh, direct staff to draft a resolution for introducing a discontinuance under the premise of it being in the public interest, and whether that, and what that specific discontinuance might be, or defer, or, and to a specific, or for specific conditions. I guess it's board's pleasure as to what to do here.
The planning committee wanted to, I, I, what did they want to say, defer to a, a later date, or defer, or whatever, postpone, until they knew what the, um, Tappy had found as far as the wetlands and everything, and I think at this point personally, that we can't, if we're looking at public interest, I understand there, the people have a definite problem, but at this point in time, I guess I don't see, um, that it would be in the public interest to discontinue that parcel, because if we mess up that, and I, I have concern about, you know, do we need to have a go, if the wetlands designation does not fall where he thinks it's going to be, and he has to use that as a exit, and we've discontinued it, I just think we're premature.
Uh, I completely agree, uh, simply we just don't have enough information at this point, and especially with all of the heartache between, uh, the D N R and, and everything else with the Cam Phillips Center fiasco, and not being able to get a permit without a wetland delineation, and then not being able, that whole circular, uh, disaster, really gun shy about doing something without any wetland delineation, or even knowing what the plat's going to look like. If it turns out that it's platted in a way that we don't need that, sure, we can absolutely revisit that, but at this time, we just don't have enough information.
Right.
I make the motion to defer.
Okay.
Later date.
Uh, a motion by Ermeling to defer?
Second.
A second by Feeny on the discussion, just, just a real quick, uh, Joe and Lori texted me today, and they're, I believe, in South Carolina, and, uh, they're, uh, having their, uh, first grandchild, so she was in labor when he sent it to me, so that's why they're not here tonight.
Joe is online.
Oh, Joe's online? Grandpa, are you online?
Yes, I'm here.
Yep, boy or girl?
Um, not, not yet.
Oh, boy, oh, boy, all right.
Any, anytime.
Well, early congratulations, so, all right, so we, on the discussion, uh, Joe is on, go ahead.
I'd like to make an amendment to your motion and offer that we, we revisit this in September, not just say at a later date, because Perkey's email is suggesting us to table until, until September. So I think we should, um, I'd like to make a motion to, to bring this back to the board in September of twenty-three.
A point of, uh, point of order, uh, in amendment to.
An amendment, I'm sorry, an amendment to your motion to bring this back in September of twenty-three.
Okay. I will second that amendment to the motion.
Okay, so we have an amendment by Cronin and a second by Feeny to amend the motion. Uh, any more discussion on that? All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? So Carrie, now on the original motion, uh, which is Ermeling and Feeny, uh, any more discussion? Hearing none, all those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? So Carrie, okay? Yeah, thank you, Joe.
You're welcome.
All right, so let's get back. Chris, thank you, and John, we have you in the meeting here.
Item six, I believe, uh, under six?
Uh, item ten, sorry. Yeah, but I think, uh. Yep, okay, all right, so let's just move right through here. Do we, is there, John is in closed session or not?
Most likely not, unless there's some discussion leads to something that requires us to go on closed sessions, I guess the intention there that we not go there must be.
Okay.
Question I came up.
If it was non-closed session, okay, so where?
Thirty-six.
What is it, thirty-six? Okay. So let's move to, if I can, uh, have, uh, my way one more time, let's go to unfinished business thirty-six, updating possible action on status of municipal center completion.
So we did, uh, ask John if he could be present at tonight's meeting to kind of give an update here, and didn't get a, uh, a summary in the packet, and we have been, kind of, you know, giving you updates on this project over time, it seems that there are some questions about things that we want to try to address tonight, so, um, John is here to kind of give you a wrap-up of things, I guess, one thing we will say is that we are still tracking within the budget that was established for this project, we had a fourteen point, fourteen million, three hundred seventy-two thousand, seven hundred eighty-seven dollar construction contract with Myron. That number includes a, essentially contingency, a hundred and twenty thousand dollar change order allowance that has been managed throughout the project. We have some, uh, updates that John would like to provide along those lines, um, as I played to some of the trustees and addressed in some emails. Things, we're getting towards the end, things, we get new information every day, it seems, and, um, you know, we, we have a lot more information than we did last time John was here, back in November. Well, I should say better information, uh, one thing that has occurred is that, uh, certificate of substantial completion, which is an official project or contract required document, has been, uh, prepared and provided to Myron for their signature with the, uh, substantial completion date noted of January fourth, twenty-twenty-three, that signed document has not come back from Myron yet. Some point when it does come back, it'll come to the village for their signature, uh, in this case, it'll be President Maloney's signature. So there's, there are some things that we will be, uh, talking with the architect of all, that we have, or as I have mentioned in emails, as the contract is structured, it's an agreement between the owner, Village of Weston, and the contractor, Myron, art, the architect in this case, or any case, um, is the first line of, uh, interpretation of the contract and enforcement of its provisions, and, uh, at this point, this contract is still being handled along those lines. So John, I guess, and to turn it over to you to give some of the high-level review of where we are, I guess, um.
Pretty neat. I think you summarized it, uh, very well already, Keith, but, uh, thanks for having me here tonight, uh, did want to let you know, as Keith mentioned, substantial completion was issued, um, for January fourth. Um, when I was here last, we were shooting for the December twelfth date, that wasn't met, uh, multiple things happened, uh, one of the major issue was the elevator delay in the delivery of the elevator, which then delayed the inspection of the elevator, and then the elevator inspector, state inspector, then delayed his visit, so some of that thing, uh, kind of led to the delay. Um, as Keith mentioned, we carried a contingency and allowance for the project of two-point-two-five percent, which is about three hundred and twenty thousand dollars. Uh, I can tell you we're about a hundred and fifty-three thousand below that, so as of today, we spent, um, one-point-one-seven percent of contingency, which I would say hats off to pretty much everybody involved with the project, uh, if you do your research, that's very low for a project. Our goal is to continue working to keep that number down, there are still some loose ends that we're putting together, um, but within the next week, um, we can hopefully put, file, put the button, and Myron is looking to have all the punchless items done by the end of this week, um, and then we'd be back up validating those, uh, completed items. Bottom line is, if there's items you guys have concerns or thoughts, I'm here again tonight to hear those, take that information back and, uh, bring the information and answers back to you if you have concerns or things you want answered, uh, that you haven't heard yet tonight.
Questions? What's, um, you said we have one-point-one-seven percent contingency, what's the, do you have a full dollar amount for what's been spent at this, at this time?
What's been spent today is one hundred and sixty-eight thousand dollars of the three hundred and twenty thousand.
Are you asking what's been spent on the entire project?
No, I, I'm sorry, I shouldn't have been specific, just as far as contingency, that's all I need.
The numbers I gave you is specifically related to allowance and contingency.
Three hundred and twenty thousand.
What's that?
I thought it was two hundred and fifty thousand.
It was a hundred and twenty thousand in Myron's contract and a, a separate line item that we carried, because we didn't really want it known, I'll say, of two hundred thousand, so a total of three hundred and twenty thousand dollars, which is two-point-two percent.
But we, we talked two point, two hundred and fifty thousand for a long time, in the very beginning, it's because, uh, I compared that to the safety building of over three hundred thousand on a, you know, two million dollar project versus two hundred and fifty thousand on a fourteen million dollar project, I mean, you and I had that discussion many, many times, on two-fifty, and I thought it was extremely low, and you thought that's what the architect came in, but now it's three-twenty?
But Mark, we're, we're not approaching to use it, so I think either way, it's.
No, 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 it doesn't matter if we're going to use it or not, I, I was under the understanding of two-fifty, and I don't understand how that kept coming up over and over and over, and yet it wasn't two-fifty.
Our total project budget when we awarded, we were using two hundred thousand, plus the one-twenty that was within the contract most.
It was the first I've heard of that, okay.
So when you say there was two hundred thousand that you didn't, I, I realize you didn't spend all that, but that you, you didn't want, who didn't want? You.
Myron didn't want us to know that it was.
No, 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 the two hundred thousand dollars was on the project cost sheet that I made for the village.
Okay.
So that was a cost sheet that was pretty much between us, and really was a need to be known by the bidders.
Okay.
So it was a line item we carried for the project, and then we carried the one-twenty in Myron's bid, so they knew of the one-twenty, the two hundred kind of was, if unforeseen things additionally beyond the one-twenty.
Is that two hundred documented somewhere?
Yes, it's on the original document that I, when I did the total project cost sheet for you, it's on that document.
It's maybe a good idea not to let the contractor know.
That's not the point, the, the point is, uh, transparency, we had huge discussions on this two fifty, because you came to the board several times to increase that, and, uh, you were, we were all fine with two-fifty in the beginning, so why are we going to increase it? Now, we did use art provides for other things, but that two-fifty was brought up several times, and I, I am, I'm going to actually go into my emails today, because I want to research that a little bit. I'm just, I feel a little hoodwinked, to be honest, and, uh, interesting.
Was this a performance?
Back contracts and all, um, original budget that was put together at the time of award, and you see.
Well, I, I just remember seeing, uh, the safety building budget and seeing three hundred and some thousand, uh, for contingency, and I could not understand how that number was derived by the same person on a, what was it, one-point-eight million dollars, or one-point-four million? No, one-point-four million dollars for the safety building, but yet two hundred and fifty thousand for this.
You want me to answer that?
I don't know, I, I don't, I don't know how I could, I'm not even going to accept the answer, but go ahead and try.
You just, you asked how was derived.
Yeah.
A new construction, one-hundred percent new build, carries a different contingency than a re-old remodeled building, that's how those numbers are usually derived at. And also depending on the timing when that number was put out there, early on in design phase, you'll see contingencies from ten to fifteen percent, and as things get buttoned up in design, they come down, but there again, new build to remodel builds also bottom line at different numbers.
I do think that's a fair answer, so.
But ten to fifteen, it's, I mean, that, there, three hundred and some thousand on one-point-four is twenty-five plus percent, so, but you're.
For instance, on the Wausau Water Plains, there are projects that.
Don't even bring that up, because that's also another point that we had several discussions on, because the person from Myron that was supposed to be running this one was at that, correct?
Correct.
Because I, I don't want to lose my mind here, because I mean, some of this stuff, I know I have a good memory here, and, uh, there was a lot of discussion on that, and then at the end, we ended up getting another lead or something. We were being shared with a triple size and probably more penalties, because ours only carried two hundred and fifty dollars a day, which, uh, I would let that go, I would, if, even if, I mean, I don't know if we're going to charge them or not, but if the two hundred and fifty dollars is nothing compared to putting a whole other crew on, or going into overtime to get it done, when they said they were going to get it done. I would pay that penalty all day long at two hundred and fifty dollars a day, if you say, and I've heard this from you, and maybe you, if that's a standard contract, I think that's crazy, if that's the standard, two hundred and fifty dollar penalty, that's nothing. I, 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 two hundred and fifty dollars doesn't even carry one or two people overtime, you know, for what they're making.
See, the form of the contract is standard, now the liquidity damages clause is probably written differently in every contract, so.
Well, I, I was told that it was a standard contract, that's what I kept being told.
The contract itself is the standard form of contract, yes.
With a, a standard two hundred and fifty dollar.
I didn't say that two hundred and fifty dollars a day was standard, I said that's what's in our contract. Are they facing liquidated damages for this?
Potentially, but, but if we want to get into that discussion, then we should go to closed session.
I understand, but I mean, what was the original date, December for substantial completion?
December twelfth.
December twelfth.
The contract that the village signed with Myron has a liquidated damage clause of two hundred and fifty dollars a day.
What was the original target date in the contract?
December one.
Okay.
Uh, Jim Penesal had his hand up, uh, current plan commission member and future trustee, Jim, do you have a question?
Yeah, I just.
Oh, yes, yes.
I, uh, I wrote that deal wrong, it should be for this agenda item, not the forty-five, I read that wrong in the end. Write a post comment, so, whenever it's appropriate.
On this?
Yes, sure. Why? No, I'm sorry. Can we, are, are you planning on charging them liquidated damages or not?
Well, they want to go into close session if we're going to talk like that.
It's on our agenda.
It's on our agenda today?
Well, I thought that's what we're going to. Oh, I'm sorry.
Well, I'm, no, I, I think we ought to get rid of everything and then go into close. Otherwise people are going to have to leave and come back.
Yeah, you're right.
Yeah, okay. So are we at a standstill right now with John?
No, I think Jim had a comment.
Right, I know, but Jim wants to talk if we're done for a little second here, right?
Yeah.
Go ahead. Yeah.
Let's ask for John, please.
Yep. Do you have more or maybe we can, if John wants to talk more after you're done talking, he can come up too. Okay. Are we good with that?
John's here tonight.
Yeah, yeah, John's staying. Okay.
Well, you might come back when I'm done anyways. Jim Pittselt, 502 Arrow Street. So yeah, tonight we're here to talk about the new municipal center and, and CUNY architects. But I want to shift focus a little bit to a different architect, Chev Lamb and Harmon. You maybe never heard of them, but they're another architectural firm with a little bit different vision than CUNY. Maybe history of building projects was coming down under budget and in less time than planned. Their experience lends them to allow extensive use of structural steel. And they know that those buildings can be built to last a very long time. At one of our building planning committee sessions, it was stated that steel buildings do not last. This was the justification for the precast concrete panel construction of this building. So speaking of that same project, one of their projects done by Chev Lamb and Harmon. Everyone here probably has heard of it. It's a small building located in, in New York. It's called the Empire State Building. It was built in 1930. It only took 410 days to complete on Manhattan Island. Yes, an island, not the sandy soil here in central Wisconsin. The design contract stated 18 months to occupancy and the building was completed in 13 and a half months. That building is 102 stories tall. Our two-story garage is still not yet complete. Their building is 2.8 million square feet. In fact, it is so large that building has its own zip code. Our municipal center has one lonely mailbox by the street. The budget for the Empire State Building was $60 million, but the actual cost to build it was only 41 million, a 32% savings. Our project had a contractually agreed upon completion date of December 1 and currently it's 47 days behind schedule with no actual end in sight to the project. Our project is over budget. I disagree with the comments made before. If there was dollars hidden in the contract. That's not transparent at all and not acceptable. We also spent money from ARPA funds and other funding channels to make up for, because we ran out of contingency dollars. I believe the, the number that was budgeted was 120 or 150,000 dollars. And that was gone after 320,000 dollars. That's why we pulled from these other funding sources. The architect would probably disagree. To see an architect also designed a state of their an unnecessary duplicate training room and with a total of zero dollars budgeted for audio and visual equipment inside of it. This was truly a disservice done to the customer. Speaking of the customer, I want to remind everyone here that customers' product is not Keith Donner. Keith doesn't even live in the village. The customers is 16,000 residents of the Village of Weston will be bearing a cost and tax burden of this building for many years to come. This project was awarded to the lowest bidder and I feel that, that fact is being well illustrated by how our project is over budget and behind schedule. It was also shown by the quality of some areas of the building. I sent an email two weeks ago showing a handrail which was missing welds and had an awful finished quality. I highly doubt that Chev Lamb and Harmon would have allowed welds to be missing on the Empire State Building. How about the 300 plus items which are on a punch list? Why are we waiting until the building is 47 days past completion to first discover 300 things which need to be corrected? I find it hard to believe that not one single one of them could have been identified or remedied in the last 18 months. So where do we go from here? I am formally requesting that the Board of Trustees hold CUNY architects fully responsible for their lack of delivering a quality building in the timeframe outlined in the contract. The responsibility is not just on the general contractor, but the architect. Yet the architect should also be fined the $250 a day in liquidated damages in addition to Myron construction. I look forward to seeing the corrective action taken this evening by the Board of Trustees on behalf of all the tax peers here in the Village of Weston. Thank you.
President? Yep. If there is questions about, about things that Administrator Donner may have said in an email or said during a meeting, that's one thing. Quite frankly, it really doesn't matter that he lives in the village. And, and I find that ad hominem attack ridiculous and not that it has to do with anything. In the Empire State Building, five workers died and there was no safety construction. So let's keep it focused on things that we can prove and are related to the project.
Thank you. Um, response?
Thank you for your words. Just to clarify a couple of things. When John Wallencamp and myself from CUNY Architects made a statement about steel structures, I was 100% talking about pre-engineered steel structures, which is the metal building. You can look at that. That's what I said. This building is a steel superstructure. That's got steel on it. Just, so I'm not here to debate it. The Village of Weston, the residents of Weston, got a quality building. I'm liable for anything that anybody feels is a shortcoming here, but in my opinion, there are no shortcomings. Okay? There's not a single soul in this room that is perfect. Okay? The 300 items that are mentioned, take a look at that list. There's simple little marks on the walls for paint. Were welds missed? Sure. You know how many welds are in this building? You know how many people looked and walked past certain things? Either way, every ounce of energy from CUNY architects staff cared about this facility and will care for the rest of its life. Okay? To bash CUNY architects is a shortcoming. Okay? To look around this building and to say it was built like the Empire State Building? Sorry. In today's world, it's what it is. If there's a board member that has a concern with what CUNY architects has done, CUNY architects contract. Please don't say it behind my back. I get feedback. I care what I do. I spent 30 years doing this. Thank you.
Thanks, John.
Could I clarify something as well?
What?
We have a $14 million, $32,787 construction contract with Myron. Our total project budget is $16,636,787 as we established at the time of contract award. That number includes the $400,000 budget estimate for assault storage structure that has never been awarded. Okay? We are not including that. I mean, there's not, no part of that that's even spoken for at this point. There was a $65,000 furnishing allowance, $5,000 estimate on geotech fees during construction, $37,700 which have been utilized during construction. We had a $200,000 contingency and budget of $35,000 estimate for the gas and electric service fee construction, which is about $9,000 has been documented or has been paid for that particular installation. Of that, so the subtotal for all those items in the budget was $755,000. We included the land purchase, land fees and then architect engineering fee of a half a million dollars in there. That subtotal was a $1,509,000. That gets the total of $16,636,787. We are, I'm tracked to be under that or at that number. As it stands right now, even with some change order items that are being put forth by a contractor that still need follow-up and discussion and review by the architect.
Okay.
So
I think we got good facility. Nice project. It's a good size. It's a large project. And this other project, there's always change order. There is a punch list and they have to work on it. They have to complete it and it is architect responsibility. He has stamped those plans. He has stamped his back. He wrote the book and he better stay by it and he is. I think Myron also several time at the meeting said, we are not going anyplace until you people are satisfied with the project. And I hold them to it.
Okay. I'd just like to concur with what Louis Shang said. Steve?
I have nothing more to add.
Well, I guess, yeah, I, I understand and I, I wanted us in the building sooner also, but just as an example, I, I put on an addition to my house about a year and a half ago. I got estimates before and I assure you with the prices of materials and everything else, I ended up paying a lot more than what I had anticipated. I also had delays or couldn't get my trim because they discontinued it or you couldn't get it. So I had to put a different one in and go without trim. I mean, so a project like this, and I know that my son has done work. He is in construction with a company, company he works for. And he was just telling me the other day about the difficulty they are having putting the, getting the elevator going in because of delays in the, I don't know, steel, whatever it is. But he said, they still are without there. So I guess, I'm, I guess I'm not surprised there was some delays or, or whatever, because I've experienced them just in a small, very small project.
I'll save any comments for a close session.
Okay.
Same.
Same with me too. Okay. Rest of the go in their clothes?
I don't, what if I would go into clothes for
For what?
Strategizing or something or, we don't need to go into clothes. I don't know. I'm not sure we have a reason to go into clothes then.
I, I did not write this close session.
I left it on in case there was a desire to go into a close session with the architect to talk about possible negotiation issues with the contract.
What's your pleasure?
That's a decision for later. I guess once you want to move that up.
Well, we're not going to go into close session now.
Right. Good.
Okay.
Wish so.
Well, I'm not going to, I'm not going to, we've been moving all over this agenda now. I think let's just stay to some kind of direction here and close sessions are going to be last.
Okay.
I mean, back and forth, back and forth.
Well, I just don't like recessions in the middle of a meeting.
Right.
Yeah, we'll just table until the end of the meeting.
Yep. Okay.
Yeah, I think it's, I think it's laid out on the agenda, what, what we're going into close session for. I'm just reading the agenda item. I mean, I, right, I, I definitely think that. All right, we don't need to see anymore.
So we, let's see, 35, 36 and 37. All right, listen, we are now back on reports minutes from boards, committees and commissions. Move to acknowledge items 10, 11, 14 and 16 concurrently. Motion by Feeny, second by Ermeling. Any more in the discussion? Hearing none. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? So carried. Reports from departments. They're all in the packet. Any more from Keith, Mespiere?
No, I guess I'll add that there's a Wednesday meeting that the mayor is arranging, Mayor Wass is arranging relative to PFAS. That's going to be at City Hall.
Okay.
Uh, kind of a high roll.
This week, this week, one second?
Yeah.
Okay. All right. Uh, so noted. Uh, clerk, Pam?
Keep your
All right. Let's see, Jessica, finance. Nothing. Fire MS?
Our report is in the packet and we do have our banquet. We're doing our first annual awards banquet this Saturday night. So that'll be in remotely this year and then we got an alternate, maybe back and forth every year.
Saturday night, this Saturday night?
Yep.
Where's it at?
Uh, the Hilton.
Oh.
It's supposed to be nice. Yeah.
Very nice. It's going to be a little bit more upscale. We start at six.
It started at six?
Yep.
Saturday night?
Yep. Nine members are $75 if you're a member. If you're a member, it's $30. Park and Rec, Sean?
I have a report in the packet.
Okay. Any more questions? Jennifer, Plan Development?
Uh, the new assistant planner started today.
I met him when I walked in. He's tall.
He's very tall.
Need to have a basketball team.
And then just one thing that I noticed, we may want to talk about 34 and 39 together or do 39 first and then go back to 34 with the P schedule because they're kind of interrelated.
Okay.
Everything all right, chief?
It's called a well-run department. Okay, so so noted. So 39 and 34. Okay. Uh, okay, Chief?
Uh, just a quick staffing update. We have three openings currently. We're working on a sergeant process for Sam Stroick's retirement. We just had a detective promotion that we promoted Matt Nelson, who was from the drug unit. He started beginning at the month. So it was a vacancy with the appointed drug position. We did a school resource officer appointment with Josh English. So there's been a lot of movement and all.
Okay.
Busy with a lot of interviews.
Thank you. Public Works, Michael. Have an ad?
Not a whole lot. I guess the only other thing is, I mentioned in here, we did get a request from the state of Wisconsin regarding the Business 51 project. So just some things that the board will need to take action on. I got that on Friday, so I didn't have a chance to put it in the packets. We'll talk about that in February.
Okay. All right. And Nate, Technology?
Nothing, Ed.
I see we have something on the wall.
That was Scott's last estate project. Those are 21, this way, two over here?
And then one over here, two or no?
So we know one over there.
Yep.
Facing you.
Okay. And this will be gone?
That'll be gone.
Yep. Okay. The camera will be where?
In, on the ceiling in the back.
Okay. Any questions for Technology? And we'll have like things right here or what? Or things right here or what?
Microphones?
I can't hear you. What?
Microphones will be in the ceiling tiles.
Oh.
It'll be
And they're already adjustable?
Yeah.
Oh, cool. Okay. And the speakers are already up there or no?
No speakers are out there yet.
Oh, they are going to be. Okay. All right. Any questions for Nate? No? Are you going to have little like plugs in and chargers here? I think so. I think Valerie or somebody showed me that there's stuff underneath each one of these. Okay.
There, if you, we could put some
No, 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 just wait. We can, six months or nine months from now, we can look at that. Okay. All right. So Technology. So a motion to accept. So moved by Ermeling. Reports from directors, seconded by Hardiger. Any more in the discussion? Hearing none. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? So carried. Work product transmittals, December building permits. What's your pleasure? Move to acknowledge, a motion to acknowledge by Feeny.
Second.
Second by Cronin. Anything on the discussion or any more in discussion? Hearing none. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? So carried. Sent agenda. Should I stop right there or do we want to do it separately?
Uh, motion to approve items 29, 30 and 31 concurrently.
Second by Cronin and seconded by Feeny. Any more in the discussion? Did you have a question on daybreak?
Did, did, um, did Jim Mackey sell that or Jason? I'm sorry.
Yeah, Jason did.
Oh, okay. Okay, I know that.
Okay. And, and then just to so noted that we're acknowledging the retirement of building inspector Sean Scott Tetro. And I think he's having a little get together. I think staff is doing this Friday the 13th.
Cool.
It was ready. It was ready. Yeah. Last Friday I, I had to go to a hotel. Yeah. Did I go? Okay?
I was unable to attend myself.
It was well attended.
Did you have Chinese? Scott didn't like Chinese. If you didn't know that, now you do. So, uh, motion and seconded and no more in the discussion?
Just one thing.
Uh, yes, there is.
Who accepted the letter, I guess? Was it you, Jessica, or did we talk about this? It looks like it's been updated. So I just wanted to say thank you. I'm not sure if it would. We reviewed the, the original letter that he submitted.
Yeah.
Yeah.
He provided it.
Yeah, no, I see.
Okay. Yep. All right. Yeah. Okay. Thank you. Good catch. Uh, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? So carried. Ordinance number 35 is done, 34 resolutions. So now let's go to 39. You want that one first? You thinking? Uh, you want that one first, you thinking?
Um, yeah, you missed. You missed thirty-four.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Yeah, but.
Well, no, thirty-four is coming after thirty-nine.
Yeah, a couple, a couple minutes ago.
Oh, I'm sorry.
Had said to us that we should.
There's a lot of jumping around.
Thirty-four. So I have worse hearing than you. Well, I'm like three times older than you. Yeah, what? All right, so thirty-nine? Is it you?
Yep, I can take that.
Okay.
For what, thirty-eight?
Uh, no, 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 we're, we're doing thirty-nine, then going back to thirty-four.
And then coming back.
Yep, then, then we're gonna follow the line after that.
It is.
It's a little wild, I'm sorry, it's, it's, I was moving around to uh, uh, clear the, the field out there, but yet we're on camera, so we're not really clear.
All right, with um, Scott leaving us, uh, we need to fill in temporarily for the commercial electrical inspections that we have. Um, so I did reach out with the city of Wassa to their um. Building department, um, they've kind of been our backup over the years.
Anyway?
Anyway.
So we've been using?
Uh, in, in different times, um, we've had contracts with them, um, Scott was off for a period of time prior to Roman being here. Um, and then they sometimes assist um. When needed, so they wanted to update the contract, so you have a contract in there. Um, previously back in twenty seventeen, I think it was a seventy-five dollar fee, um, hourly fee. Um, they're asking ninety-five, which is why we're asking to do some changes to that fee schedule.
So when we used Wassa in the past, the city of Wassa, was it one each, one-off, it was not a contract? Or did we actually do a contract as we needed them?
We had a contract, we had a contract in twenty seventeen.
Okay.
And I thought there was another one, I only found the twenty seventeen. Um, Scott had had surgery at some time and they handled all of our inspections. Um, sometimes they just kind of fill in, they also use Evol, which is our permitting software, so they very easily can just kind of take.
So if we needed them in eighteen, nineteen, twenty or twenty-one, it would have just followed that same. It was just kind of an agreement that we had in place.
Yeah, and he wanted to formalize it again.
Who's he, the Wassa?
Um, Bill Keever.
Okay, yep.
Who's the Wassa, um, Sony administrator, lead building inspector.
So that's gonna do um, uh, electrical, um.
So this will be electrical through, commercial electrical through April first. Um, so we will have provide services going forward, uh, because we either have to contract with the state. Um, which can get pretty pricey, um, Roman was kind of looking at the difference there um, with that. Um, or talk to them again to kind of continue this agreement, they do Schofield right now.
So they're doing Schofield, uh, who's doing cornwater, us or do we?
We are assisting just through um. Anything that has already been um issued through the thirteenth of this month, so it'll be a little while that, that um. Roman is down there.
So then cornwaters can be done by who?
They are going to have to contract services.
Okay. Does Wassa have the capacity? You know, to do this, and then where do they, I mean, I'm not trying to be a stinker.
We're gonna have to talk to them about it.
And then we will have to just work out timeline and, you know, who's?
He has the capacity, there shouldn't be very many, it's just the commercial, but we do have some bigger projects, one of them that's gonna be. Um, talked about later on in the agenda, um, there are a few coming forward, um, but it shouldn't be very many.
Okay.
A lot of it is just, we get a lot of the um. Like meter change out type things that need to be done, and so that's what's on um. The agenda to be changed.
Okay.
Do we have anything to compare, like, we're going through Wassa, there's like PGA offices, similar services, like that.
You have to go through, I, I believe you have to go through the state's provider, which is Badger, Badger Contracting.
Badger, Badger State Consulting, and so, I mean, their, their fee scale is set by the state. Uh, and that's based on a county per county.
Yeah.
Uh, basis, so.
So how does Wassa relate to that?
Significant, Wassa is significantly cheaper.
Okay, that's.
So, I mean. Um, we, we also do run a, a permit cost cap on, on our electrical, which Badger Land Consulting does not.
Oh, okay.
So the Lockreed building, what was the old uh, uh, hotel down in Rothschild that Lockreed bought? That was a seventeen thousand dollar electrical permit. Wow. We're converting that to the.
Yeah. Yeah, I just.
What, what did I miss on this Badger thing, so? Wassa is with Badger too?
They have their own.
So what?
They have their own commercial electrical inspectors, like we did when Scott was here. In order to be a commercial electrical inspector, you basically have to be like Scott was.
Yep.
Have a master.
Yep.
Be a master electrician and then.
And, and Wassa has it?
Yes.
And Badger has it.
Yeah, so if you don't have one on staff or you don't have the ability to like.
Contract.
Have contract with another county that has it, you have, you're, you're required by state law to actually do these, so you have to then use.
You then, okay, somehow I missed it.
Yeah, so we're gonna attempt not to have to use Badger Land, but.
Okay.
Um.
All right.
We need a little more time.
So the contract for inspection service is okay, so.
It's on an hourly basis.
Are we going down the road of looking for another inspector?
Yes, potentially.
On that same, are we, what's, what's the possibility that you can get that?
He can't.
In, in the next three months, that's a, that's a pretty tight turnaround. I, I can't.
What are we talking about?
I can get commercial certified.
He can do the commercials or commercials, but he can't be a commercial electrical inspector.
Right.
Ever.
We would have to have.
Ever, or unless he?
Ask.
Jennifer, there is, there is a, there is a. A part of the DSPS that it does allow for. I talked to Scott about it.
Okay, cuz I was told that you had to be like a journeyman plumber, a, and then you take this extra test and that's how they get them. So Wassa has on staff, they've got basically guys who are just. The plumbing inspector, or commercial plumbing, but they also do the full commercial um, reviews too.
So it's regardless of what the service or technician we get from Wassa, it'll be ninety-five dollars an hour. So it could be the master electrician and it could be a journeyman of some sort.
Well, it's just whoever their inspector, they're, they're a commercial electrical inspector, which I think they only have.
They only have one commercial electrical inspector, Drake Rinaldi, so he's the one that would be.
I guess my question is, is have we done uh, you know, some kind of formula? That we could not just stay with the contract? You know, what, what is the contract over here, we have no history with a contract, u- utilizing this contract as a second person. Assisting Roman. And what would that be, do we even know what that number would be? You know, we've only done it in little segments, but, you know, so if we go through, if we go into this kind of blindly, I don't need to say blindly, but if we go into this. Without that knowledge. We may hire another person, yet we might have just contracted with Wassa. Somebody that's familiar with the area, somebody that has different levels of expertise. And we might pay seventy percent of what we would have paid a hundred percent, I'm not just talking hourly wage, I'm talking about all the benefits, all the environment, all the, everything else. You know, the vehicle, everything, and I think, I think it's, it would behoove us not to look at something like that. It's a neighbor, we shared the roads, we shared the schools, we shared up, uh, the shopping, the churches, everything, why, why wouldn't we look at that and see where it comes out?
Talking about contracting out for services rather than hiring for some.
Yep.
And I, I think if you're right, if you said Jennifer, that we don't do a lot of commercial electrical inspections that require this, this level of expertise, is that correct?
I'd have to go through.
But we're, it's not comparatively speaking residential.
Any, any commercial project that we've had in the last, you know, X amount of years, that's what Scott has handled in-house.
But if there's not a, a, abundance of it that we.
The percentage, the percentage is less commercial and more residential.
Correct, that's.
Which is wrong.
And in, in eighteen, when I got, when I first got elected the, for the third time on, you know, here. Um, Fridays was an in-house day, is Friday still an in-house day? Yes, it is, so Fridays, so right now, out of the five days. We are basically saying that twenty percent of our work week is not offered to the public or to a builder. Of any sort, twenty percent is, we're catching up, we're doing paperwork, we're doing whatever. It was, it was designated originally as maintenance day.
Mm-hmm.
Um, and now that we don't have a large maintenance on the old building. Um, but, but you, I've, I've called several times talking to Jennifer, that we're over there working on the motors in the pool, we're helping. There's. And there's all kinds of stuff everywhere.
Still a lot of stuff.
If we're thinking about maintenance on the inspectors, why wouldn't we wanna drive that towards uh, uh, the road crew, mechanics? But, and then have the specialty for our technicians. Doing that specifically. I mean, uh, I, I'm, I'm, I'm just, these are things that we should be looking, we should be looking outside the box and. And change should be our middle name, and maybe we should be looking at some of these different things. Um, I mean, maybe that wasn't the right thing, you know, it just so happened that when we hired Scott, he was, he could do a ton of things.
Correct.
I mean, uh, we used K and M Electric and Scott did way more than electrical stuff. And uh, and had a good mind, I'm not saying you don't, but he, yeah, was pretty, I mean, I've heard uh, both chiefs say. How both of you did such a good job at both, at the facility, at the public safety building. I know you're integral here and looking at stuff, so I just think we should look at that, I, I wouldn't. I wouldn't mind taking a risk or a challenge and running a whole year. With Wassa instead of looking outside, and then hot, what if, what if the person isn't happy here, what if he or she? Decides that they wanna move somewhere else and now we start all over again, I'm not, I'm not, don't. Don't have a pain point here that, you know, oh my gosh, where else is this gonna go, you know, are we gonna use their pool person too and uh, their tech person too? I'm just saying, the opportunity is right in front of us right now, why not take a look at it? So, this is my thought. So if we're looking at uh, this contract and then you wanna dovetail this into thirty-four? Right?
Uh, thirty-four would be changing some of the fees for just the service changes.
I mean, do you wanna finish thirty-nine first and then go to thirty-four, or how did you?
Um, yeah, so they'd be approving the contract and then talking about changing the fees to cover that ninety-five dollars.
I, I moved to approve the contract for inspection services at the city of Wassa.
Second, uh, motion by Cronin, second by Feeny, any more in the discussion?
Uh, before we, or uh, just to your uh, previous point, President Maloney. At my reading of the communication with Wassa is that it wasn't, they weren't necessarily intending that we uh, go with them for everything, so as long as. Uh, Director Higgins uh, can just get their input on that, uh, for the few, or for um. Just to see if we do want to potentially experiment with that.
Well, we know we have a qualified, they know we have Roman here, they, he's qualified.
Yeah, so what I'm asking is just in this time right now, so that we can.
Right.
Continue to service the public.
Absolutely.
Is get this done, get that contract and give me time to sit down with like Michael.
Yep.
Exactly.
We have a lot of things to fill in as Scott gone.
I hear April, I hear this was April or what?
Yeah.
Okay.
Yeah.
Now, April could be something else, and I, I know.
We could always come back with an extension while we're, we're doing things and figuring out. Um, cuz they're gonna have to cover some things that Scott had one.
Or we could contract with some, with some individual.
Right.
Okay.
Yeah, we'll have a plan for you by then.
Yep, okay. All right, I understand that, I, no more in discussion, uh, all those in favor say aye.
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 Opposed? So carried, now back to thirty-four, now we're gonna stay in line, right?
Yep.
So resolution two zero two-three dash zero zero six, a resolution to amend the village fee schedule.
I moved to approve the resolution number two zero two-three dash zero zero six.
Uh, by Hardiger? Second by Wyland?
It's just a, I, of order.
Yep.
If you look at, we did put kind of, kind of how. We compare to.
Oh, okay.
Yeah.
Like what Wassa normally charges and what Bad, Badger State would charge going forward, so you can just kind of see the difference.
Oh, then we had to put it in.
Wait, I mean, we have the full fee schedule from that, probably, just, just related to what we wanted to. Yeah. Amen to that. Can you come back down to the top page real quick, thanks?
I, so, I have a couple of comments to make, so my first thought when I, when I saw this. Um, number one, if we're not, if we're not paying Scott his wages right now and we're contracting with Wassa. Are we really still spending more money because we're paying ninety-five dollars an hour, but we're only needing them for ten hours out of the week?
Not all the time, right?
I mean, I'm just throwing that idea out there, the second thought that came to mind was. We, we have a lot of development that occurs in this village because our fee schedule promotes development.
Yep.
And do we really wanna go through charging someone an extra fifty dollars an hour for an inspection? Or do we want them to build a home and collect four thousand dollars in taxes?
Well, this isn't for.
I don't, well, it's commercial, I'm just saying as, as in broad, I mean, same thing with commercial, do we want someone to come here and build a commercial property? And be able to collect the tax dollars off of that, or do we wanna fee them to death? At forty bucks, an extra forty, I mean, I'm just, just a couple of thoughts that came to mind when I saw this in the packet and. I know there's already a motion on the table, but I, I think it's something that.
So, so we see, we see us.
I think this supports you.
We see us going from fifty-five to ninety-five to seventy-five to ninety-five because we're now gonna get charged ninety-five dollars.
Yeah.
Yeah, this goes with.
But Wassa is gonna charge eight on uh, something that we're going on ninety-five, what?
They're charging ninety-five dollars an hour, so.
Yep.
Um.
Yep, and that's a fee, I got you.
And I understand that, I, I'm just, I'm looking at the bigger picture here, not just, they're gonna charge us ninety-five dollars an hour, so we have to charge ninety-five.
And, and just trying to cover that cost.
Question, I, I would, I would honestly argue, I mean, I know we're in discussion here, but I'm almost arguing a little more, but.
Yep, Husheng.
Uh, you have some ongoing projects? How do you do that?
For the ongoing projects?
Commercial projects, you have already, Scott has done part of the inspection, but it's not done.
I'm sure there's those out there.
Yeah, how are we gonna build them? You're gonna build them with a new rate, is that okay?
Well, they've already taken out the permit, so we're gonna get charged for. The ninety-five dollars an hour, I mean, this was just going forward. That's why we're asking.
The, the top one being higher by fifteen dollars, is there any other fee here that were higher than Wassa? Okay, I, I just, I, I don't know, I have this weird feeling that we shouldn't be higher than Wassa. I, I briefly last week when I was looking at it, I did not see anything that, I, I mean, I, I did not go, you know, line item by line item. Why don't we just match them at eighty, I mean, I, it's fifteen dollars, but I'm just saying. I, I, I just wouldn't, I would just expect them to be more, and I guess, I know they're covering the cost, it's, you know, we're talking about one item versus a lot of items. Or the whole basket, I should say. So just a thought, uh, we already, we have a motion on the, I can't believe you haven't called the point order or.
I was thinking about it.
So um, we have a motion on the, we can revisit this, uh, we have a motion and a second on the floor, any more discussion? Hearing none, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed?
Aye.
Uh, no?
Correct.
So no by Cronin, uh, passes six to one. Uh, let's see, so thirty-four is finished. Thirty-five, we're on target here, kids. Uh, update possible action on American Rescue Plan ARPA funds. This is just an update, this is just a marker, in case we wanna talk about it, correct, Jessica? Okay. Anybody having anything for ARPA?
I want to.
Some suggestions, anything? All right, so we got thirty-six and thirty-seven done, new business. Request from DC Everest to waive review and building permit fees for the upcoming construction of the new Green Hector Community Center.
Moved to approve.
Moved to approve by Husheng Zagami and seconded by Nate Feeny, I use all the names cuz I went Husheng first. Just uh, on the discussion.
Do we have a process for this? Uh, besides just it comes in front of the board?
No, I got a letter and they actually sent it to the plant commission, but I figured that it was.
Longer here, it does longer.
Um, the only concern I had was with the electrical inspection. And that's what I brought it up, we have a cap of five thousand dollars, it's gonna hit that cap.
Mm-hmm.[1695.44]
Um, so it would be, I'm not concerned about waiving our fee for review and that kind of thing. I just don't want. I have no idea how much. How much of an inspection that's gonna be. Um, they're not gonna cap us at Wassa, so, um. That was, I, I don't know if you wanna maybe hold off on that one and see what potentially the bill is on it? Um, and just let Everest know that it may be.
I think, I think the bill, I think the bill that we're, I, I believe we're looking a little short sighted. Um, on, on these nominal fees upfront versus what this is gonna do for our community, uh. I would think it's gonna spur growth. I think it's gonna spur an incredible amount of stuff. I've never heard the hoteliers in Weston be so excited. And they are now. I mean, John on our tourism is a, a, a pretty normal level peal guy and when I talked to him outside, I mean, he was just jumping up and down. He couldn't believe it. That this is just gonna be of this magnitude and I, I go online, I shared this with other people and I look at it. I, I, I truly don't think we have a clue what this is gonna be until we see.
Well, I, I know that it's gonna be that, but I just wanted to make sure that everybody understood because it is, being talked about as not using taxpayer dollars. And there's a possibility that taxpayer dollars from the village are gonna be. Required to be put in depending on how much they charge us for the electrical. I mean, if Scott was here, yeah, it wouldn't have been initially.
Could we take some, uh, room tax dollars, Jessica, and say that it was for rooms for the electrical inspectors or? Just words in the middle of it?
I, I just wanted you to be aware because I, that one just, I, I didn't know what it could potentially be.
Yep, Barb?
Yeah, well, the, I was, when you, I was reading the contract for Wassa and, and going, okay. This isn't just staff that we are going to pay anyway. And I don't know how much commercial, we go do for commercial. But if we're gonna be paying ninety-five dollars an hour for electrical inspection and there's no ceiling to that. I have a problem with spending and I know it's a great project. I'm not arguing it or anything else. But we are using taxpayers' dollars and I'm sure there's some taxpayers out there that don't think this is such a great project. They, they, you know, they see it as being another, you know, spending. Um, I have a problem. Not charging what it's going to cost us. We don't have money just to give away.
And I, I'd like to agree with that, um. We don't know what they're gonna, like you said, there was a building and seventeen thousand dollars of the commercial.
Yeah, that was what's bad.
And that's a fraction of the size of what this building is gonna be. I mean, this could be a lot of money. So I mean, I, I'm, I'm all for finding ways. And a different fund to cover that. Okay, not just waiving it because it's gonna cost us something. It's gonna cost us money. So it's gotta come from somewhere. And I don't, I. I, we, we have to look at that as part of, okay, this, you know, like you said, if it came through tourism, it came through development, wherever it comes from. But it's gonna cost us something. And it's gonna, and it could be thirty thousand dollars by the time it's done.
Mr. Pinstone?
Um, just a suggestion, could we? Make a line item or an idea that. On behalf of the board, that we set aside dollars as a donation to the project for that and that maybe it could be a donation from the tourism committee or, or tourism dollars. It could be a donation.
Absolutely.
Or solely channels, so it's not from the general ledger.
So if I could ask Jessica to just cover yours for a second. If we decided to do sixty thousand dollars, you know, in, in operational money and, and then maybe one of the years we do ninety, I don't know. But I, I just wanna, I'm gonna say this and I'm gonna only say it just one more time, I'm not gonna beat it to death. Um, so I think the highest number I've heard so far is seventeen thousand or thirty thousand?
Thirty.
So thirty.
Okay.
Thirty thousand dollars?
Just guessing.
We, we would be, uh, are beating our heads against our tables right now if this was being built in front of. Or Wassa or anywhere or Ringo or Easton or, you know, so I just want to tell you that. So, but, but I'm fine with that. I'm fine.
I'm not saying we don't cover the.
No, we're good. Yeah, we, we can.
Find a way to cover it internally so it doesn't come out of.
Yeah.
I mean.
Then we, yeah.
Okay, cause they're giving quite a bit towards this.
Or I think we're driving Jessica crazy right now, so she is really cringing over there.
Well, I guess.
Alright, so we, uh.
I make a motion to deny.
Okay, motion by Ermeling to deny?
Uh, on the board.
There was already a motion and a second. Yes, there was?
Oh, okay, yes, I'm sorry.
Yes, there was. So motion to approve by Husheng and second by Feeny, by Nate. Uh, any more in the discussion? Any more in discussion? Hearing none, all those in favor say aye?
Aye.
Opposed?
No.
No.
How many opposed?
Whoa, 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 wait. I, I wanna make sure what we just voted for. So.
Yeah.
I was to say, wait.
Was to approve it.
Yes. Oh, oh, sorry. Can we do that again? I'm sorry. I, I, I was gonna be, I.
That was approved.
It was my first note, it was my first note. Alright, so and, and apparently it's not gonna be my first note, so, um.
Let's do a roll, roll call.
Yeah, roll call.
Division K. Assembly.
So let's do a roll call vote. Uh, clerk?
Okay. Um, Maloney?
Uh, aye, yes.
Ermeling?
Aye.
Cronin?
Yes.
Feeny?
Aye.
Hardinger?
No.
Wyland?
No.
It's gotta be a clear yes or a no. It can't be a hmm. It can't be, I mean, did you enjoy your soup or what do you mean?
Nay.
So Nay, okay.
Zagami.
Aye.
Holy crap. It's like the first time with people. This is awesome. And I'm, not just because I'm on the inside, but, uh, anyway. Alright, so, uh, motion carries four to three.
Yes.
But I, I.
We're gonna get the money.
I definitely, we can figure it out later. Jessica's right over here. So, uh, that's not on the agenda. So, um, you know what? That was a healthy discussion though. It really was. And that's how this should work sometimes. So that's okay.
I'm getting the feeling that we need to revisit how we're approaching fees and some of this stuff.
Yeah, maybe, yes. Well, that's how you started off this conversation. So, um. Thirty-nine is done. Thirty-eight, Barb, uh, we'll get that on the agenda next time to find out where the money is coming from.
Yeah, that'd be good.
Yep, okay, I'll get you some more Africa reserves. Uh, let's see, forty.
Point, point of privilege. Nate, what's that feedback coming from?
Question, yeah.
Uh, probably the heartburn on this side of the board. That's all.
It's my ear, Steve.
I can't see.
Or Jessica's.
Job security. Job security. Yep. He got mine here and all of a sudden he says, he said, what, what is it here? He said. Seven, seven eighteen tone starts. That's what he did. And then he just gets up nonchalantly and turns it off. Alright, uh, forty, designation of Jason Roman McGuire. If you didn't know it, his first name is Jason and Roman is his middle name. As building inspector slash building manager for the village of Weston.
Moved to blue.
Second.
Moved to blue by, uh, Zagami, seconded by Ermeling on the discussion. So originally it was building inspector and chief. Something, right? The first agenda we saw was, uh, it wasn't building manager.
Chief Building Inspector.
Chief, Chief Building Inspector, okay. And now it's listed as building manager. Um, I am, uh, is, if this is approved tonight, will this also, um, bring more wages?
Should.
Should?
It would be taken up at the next HR committee meeting, which is gonna be held on the thirtieth of the month.
And, uh, you know, what, I guess the way I was talking before and I'm not, you know, trying to boo hoo this too hard, but I am. Um, you know, maybe building manager, maybe managing the grounds and stuff goes somewhere else. And doesn't get taken up by, you know, certifications and stuff. So building manager. You know, building manager is someone just knowledgeable, not just, it's big, it's way bigger than I can do. Um, but it's very handy and, uh. Common sense and all that stuff where these are certifications that Roman holds. And, um, I just wonder if, if that's money well spent. So, just a thought. Um, but it's, it's, uh, for all of you to decide. So, um, is there a motion in the, yes, there is. There's a motion by Husheng and, uh, second by Barb. Any more in discussion? Hearing none, all those in favor say aye?
Aye.
Opposed? No. I'm, I'm, I'm going no. Not personal, Roman. So, just a different belief I have. So it, I believe it passed six to one, yes. Uh, forty-one, status of interview hiring process for assistant village planner. I understand we've already had that done. Uh, very, if you haven't met him, he's, his name is Aaron something.
Aaron Apple?
He, uh, scared to death when I introduced myself to him and when I said my name. And I go, I don't care what you've heard from staff. I am not that bad. I'm a really nice guy. And we had a nice little chat, seems really, really nice. And I said, what do you know about us? Not much. Uh, I think he just moved here on Jelnik or something, right?
He had been working for Maryland County.
For a while, right?
Since last April.
Okay. And came from Point or Clover something, right?
Uh, he's from Nina originally and had been in school in Point.
Yep. Well, that's what he said. Okay.
And, uh, just had moved up here because he liked the area.
Yeah. But see, he seems, uh, just from the five minutes I spent with him, uh, very good hire. So, let's see that, so. And I congratulate him for being on board. As he kind of went away, took a real round berth around me to give away to me, so I just tease him. Uh, so I already know all that. I had that on the board or on the planning here. So, uh, forty-two. Uh, unless you want to add more? No? Okay. So, uh, claim, uh, number WM zero zero three seven one nine two zero zero eight zero. Of Board Card, forty-four oh eight Kelly Land Street Weston for cost to repair or replace their privately owned sanitary sewer lateral.
Moved to disallow?
Moved to disallow by Feeny, second by Cronin. Any more in the discussion? Hearing none, all those in favor say aye?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? So carry.
Abstain.
Abstain? Okay, so, uh, so noted, uh, six, I am abstained by Zagami.
Six zero one.
Six zero one. Thank you for the correction. Forty-three, state municipal agreement with the Wisconsin Department of Transportation for a street reconstruction grant for Ross Avenue between Metro Drive and Alderson Street. Is that what you're talking about, Mike?
Uh, no, this is a different one.
Okay, alright. Uh, what's your pleasure?
Motion to approve.
Motion to approve by Zagami, second by Cronin. Uh, any more in the discussions? Hearing none, all those in favor say aye?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? So carry. Forty-four. Uh, wetland bank credit purchases for Weston Avenue reconstruction, Ryan Street to Tony Road J. What's your pleasure? Or somebody have this or do we want to talk about this word?
Our motion to approve.
Well, I think you talked about, you still did my.
Well, we'll get it under discussion. So we have a motion, uh, by Ermeling.
Second.
Second by Feeny on the discussion.
Uh. In there said, if you don't use in five years. What's the penalty, Michael?
I guess I'm not sure. Five years.
I think. Okay, the cost of it is how much?
Three hundred and twelve thousand dollars. So each, each, each credit is a hundred and fifty thousand. And then it's just over two credits. Is what the DNR. Came with, I mean, during the initial design, you know, the first crack at it, we were over four and a half. Um, you know, we removed the multi-use path. We, uh, had the road jog a little bit to miss some of the wetlands. And. I guess essentially no matter what we did, we're gonna have something going through that area from Progress Way out to J, so. You know, we went through the whole permitting process. Uh, the DNR has got, we're at the point where the DNR has approved it. Um, it's just, we need to purchase the credits for the DNR to finalize that approval.
Uh, and that fifty thousand-ish of, uh, credits is included in that three twelve K price. On the west side?
I'm reading that that would be additional, so it'd be total plus fifty.
Yeah, so, so we'll have to do a separate, uh, permit for the west end. Um, we were initially thinking we'd have what, five hundred thousand in total wetland cost on the project. So we're at three twelve, so, you know, we've got just under two hundred thousand, you know, from the estimate. And we're, there's not, uh, there's that wide swath of wetlands on the west end. Uh, there's maybe a little pocket like at Von Kennel. Um. But we're not expecting to handle, you know, a mile stretch of wetlands on both sides of the road like we had here.
Okay.
On the east end.
Uh, it, still, I think we should look at that five years. I think there's some penalty in there.
Where, where are you seeing the five years?
It's, okay.
What's in the, oh, in the agreement here, correct.
Yeah, I think item three in there, maybe.
Page one eighty-six. Um, you must complete the project as described on her before five years from issuance.
Yep.
One eighty-six?
Yes, correct. Yeah, and that's generally because the wetland delineation is only good for five years.
What, so what's your, what's your issue with that, Husheng? I mean, I think the project's gonna be done in five years.
Yeah, our goal is to be constructed in summer.
We gotta know about it. If we, this project go past five years, there is a consequence here.
Okay.
Yeah, I think we should know about it and make sure the project is goes in five years. And if it's not going, we deal with this issue.
Okay.
Yeah, I, I mean, it said the department. Shall extend the time limit for an individual permit for no longer than additional five years if you request the extension before the initial time limit expires. So essentially if. We thought we were gonna run into that, we could request an extension, the way I read it, and get another five years.
Yep.
So, again, I guess to Steve's point here, we. We're anticipating constructing this this summer, so I don't see this five-year, um, being an issue.
Okay.
Just for the, uh, just for the, uh, future board, um, when this is done, could you just close the loop on this and say that everything's done, tied up? Yeah, I mean, once the project's done, the permit will, I mean, the, that, that portion of the permit will be closed, so it's not gonna be an open project anymore.
Correct.
I have a question.
Yep, Barb?
Could you, I don't wanna sound completely ignorant, but I sort of am here. What is a wetland bank purchase? Do we, do we pay for you? Um.
Are you kidding? You didn't know that? I have, I have no clue. I have no clue and I was hoping somebody else other than me was gonna ask it, okay?
So the DNR, um, requires that if you disturb a wetland.
Uh-huh.
Um, one of the ways you are allowed to do that is if you then pay somebody else to create a wetland for you.
Okay, that's what I was thinking.
And, and you can do that like in Madison. It doesn't have to be even near the area.
No, it actually has to be in our area, so we, essentially we're stuck working with Star Environmental Group because they're the only DNR approved site in central Wisconsin.
So if I, my backyard, I wanna put a wetlands, then I, you could.
No, 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 if you want to displace wetlands.
If you wanted to create a wetland bank in your backyard, you could go through the whole DNR process and say, hey, I'll create a wetland in my backyard.
So Weston can use it?
So Weston could use it, but then there's a lot of stipulations as far as, you know, how well are you maintaining it, how, you know, so it's. It's not just, hey, I dug a hole in my backyard and I got a wetland.
You might be there.
So.
Might be a moment.
Could I just put in a pond, suck it full of fish and, you know, have fish fries every Friday night?
Well, we're talking big areas though, right?
Correct.
I mean, yeah, I mean, no, no, movement, waters are. Just thought I'd ask. Yeah.
Well, see, that's what I kind of thought, but I really wasn't sure.
I'm sorry?
If it was that or.
A point of order. Yep, which Zagami has a point of order here. We have a motion and second. I know Nate always does this. So, uh, we have a motion and a second, uh, with no more discussion. All those in favor say aye?
Aye.
Opposed? So carry. Thank you, Husheng. Let's see, uh.
What's?
The forty-five, update discussion and possible action regarding safety building, design contract, the status of areas needing to be completed with future direction. Is that something you want to close session?
That was the one that you wanted.
Yep.
We got two. I just wouldn't be for close session.
Okay, I, I just feel like months have gone by since we brought this up, you know, several months ago. And months have gone by and we're not dealing with it. And I, I know we got a big building here. I know we got all kinds of stuff going on, but we, we got all kinds of stuff happening. It never stops.
So all we did was suspended any other further work on the public safety building, so I guess.
So where, where do we go?
He want does what he want to do.
Yep.
I, I do remember a meeting last fall that we, we made a motion to defer this until, until spring.
Okay.
I don't, I'm not trying to, I don't want to place blame on anybody, it's, it's a good discussion.
It might be okay with some of the costs coming down, but I think we gotta bring this back up and. Put this back up, you know, for some kind of discussion, have it go to plan commissions. Wherever it needs to go, bring the two chiefs in, you know, it's their building. Um, and, um.
It would be, especially would be here, I would presume, and then I.
I, I.
Is this hoping?
I wanted that exterior done last year and now I guess I'm starting to feel a little, uh, antsy that it might not get done this year. So I, I would hate to have that outside look the way it still does. I mean, from that west exterior is actually pathetic. And, uh, I think it's, some of the different drawings we've seen are, are very nice. I don't know if it's the way it's gonna be, but I think we gotta get moving. And now's the time to do the planning because in the summertime, it's not planning, summertime is doing.
I would need to be curious.
Interior, we had a couple of things still going on with the interior, but we, why not look at it? We have it approved from this board. I think one point four, some odd dollars, right?
Something like that.
Yep.
Do we need to direct staff to run RFP or estimate?
I'm sorry?
We have a budget estimate.
Yep. We, but we have it, we have it approved, right? We have an approved amount from this board to finish the rest of that. We don't? I think we do.
I don't know.
Yeah, okay.
I don't believe we ever. I think it was earmarked. It was never assigned.
Oh, that might. I, I'm gonna say I think, uh, we said yes to it.
We never had a contract.
No, we never had a contract, but we earmarked dollars.
Yeah, yeah.
I, I know the court money we're gonna take out, not knowing how that was gonna go, by the way, did you get that email I sent you? Okay. And, um, okay, I, I just think now's the time, you know.
You want to send it over agenda, or, I mean, are, are we going for, are we, are we going to, um?
Well, if we won't talk about it tonight, and then we talk about it in February, then we'd be pushing it towards, I'm sorry, what?
At this point, we have suspended work under CUNY's contract, or contract is still in effect, if we would ask them to continue, but if you want to work with a different architect, you probably have to offer proposals, would be the recommendation typically.
And I, I, I don't know what typically is, um, I, I sometimes question some of the ways government has to do things. And, um, I just wonder why we can't get some of that done just locally? And why does it all have to be under one project, why can't it be under three or four projects? Why can't the exterior be by itself? Why can't we, I thought I saw bathrooms and something else, why can't that be something?
So we'd have to have, um, separate contracts, separate bids for anything over twenty-five thousand dollars and.
Yeah, we, we, we can sit here, we can say nothing, I'm fine with that too, and then we can just let it sit there for years to come, that's fine. But I think we gotta get moving on this, and if, 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 I don't believe this board can handle that, I, I don't know, I don't know. I just, I don't wanna wait any longer, we've waited already a whole year to do anything over there. And, uh, and I know we might have said we're gonna wait till spring, spring is when you start building. You know, if we don't get going right now, we're not gonna make the construction time, I'm sorry?
We're probably behind to get a plan set together.
Probably are, yeah.
So the same plans that we had before.
Yeah. Does anyone else have a recollection on how, on how much money was earmarked for that?
I.
One point two to one point four. I was sitting in a meeting over at, uh, EMPD, and I remember when I, all I wanted was the exterior done, and I left the rest of the committee. Haggled about the rest, go, I left, I walked out.
But was it approved by the board?
Are there, are there other needs over there right now besides the exterior?
Yeah, there's quite a few.
Quite a few.
There were some HVAC issues, if I'm not.
There's stuff that's kind of like.
There was a, there was a list.
There's some painting and there's some stuff that's just not finished. Yep, ceiling, yep.
Okay, so, because I, uh, and I don't wanna speak for anyone else, but just speaking for me, um, because we've had so many losing parts, I'd, I'd rather just have all of the information given so that with updated prices and everything, we can see everything on paper, take a look at it, and then either vote to resume work under CUNY or move in a position for an RFP. Um, but there, other than a recol, of, an imprecise recollection um, of the amount that we've approved and a deferment for action until this spring, um, I, I don't know what we would be exactly approving or denying.
Is there, so it's under contract still with Kenny, Kenny, is there, is there a termination, uh, fee if we terminate that contract?
No, there's not.
No, there's not, okay. All right, um, can we just, instead of waiting a whole other month?
Okay.
Can we, can we have, uh, not a quorum, but get together and hash this out? With, uh, Hardinger, uh, the chiefs, uh, yourself, Michael, Hushain? So I don't, I don't mean this to not include somebody, but, um, I think we ought to maybe have a meeting next week or a week after, and then, uh, try to get this thing moving forward.
Can we, can we do that meeting posthumously and, and make directions, the direction here tonight to be to send out RFPs? And, and then you guys can hash it out after.
It's not that meeting.
Sure.
Yeah.
Okay.
Almost like forming a special committee or something like that.
You wanna do that, that's fine.
An ad hoc committee?
Yeah.
But we don't have the in agenda item in order to create an ad hoc.
Uh, we have, uh, update discussion and possible action regarding the safety building, I says, that says it all right there.
So can we put some on the schedule for next week?
Michael?
I guess the only question or comment was, we, we do have a plan set that was bid once, I mean, do you want to bid it again to see if costs have come down utilizing that, I mean, that's the most expeditious way of getting something done, otherwise.
The main, the main point I had there was a one point two contract or a total with, uh, three hundreds and plus dollars in, um, in, uh.
So the actual bid was a five hundred and five thousand was the low bid, I, I meant, I think the estimate was the range, and as John mentioned earlier, so I guess.
What, what are you talking about, five hundred thousand?
That was what the bid was for the safety building exterior upgrades, the.
That's just the exterior.
That's just the upgrades, and we're not talking about the one, two, one, four.
Okay, so you're looking at redoing the whole thing, okay.
I think we have to research the minutes there on what, what this board.
Well, we'll get to the end, we'll get to the end of next week and then we'll.
Okay. Okay. All right.
So do we need a motion then tonight?
To approve, um.
To approve. Direct staff to, to put together an RFP and have it distributed. Okay, I'll make that motion.
Uh, by Cronin?
Second.
Second by Hardinger, uh, any more in discussion?
What would be the scope of that RFP?
Well, I think we'll go through that at the beginning. Cause there, there's a lot.
We're just saying this now so we don't have to wait a whole other month.
Yeah.
To get going.
Over here, okay? So, um, to be discussed further, but at least this, uh, approval is there.
Yep.
So, um, any more in discussion? Hearing none, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, so carried. Uh, forty-six, update on strategic plan report. Uh, A, consider approval of vision, mission, and value statements, and B, acknowledge stra- strategic priorities.
So these are items that have been, um, look forward after the, uh, gathering of information and input from the community and the, uh, stra- strategic plan workshop, um, which was in that later November? My recollection? Anyway, there was a discussion at that point or during that session to revisit what our village mission, I'm sorry, village vision, mission, and values, um, would be as included in a strategic plan, so you have those before you. Um, in terms of, um, you know, what was discussed there, I, I think there was an acknowledgement that our current strategic plan statements in these, in this regard were outdated and we wanted to revisit them, so this is the, this is the language that's been proposed.
I, I would propose, um, that we defer this to the next month's meeting. This, this came out on Friday afternoon, uh, I did not go over this. So I'm not prepared, I'm not prepared to vote on this today.
It's fine, it can be.
If I had thirty more days and asked some questions, I could dive into this a little bit more.
Over it, there's no need to have to action on it.
So that's just where I go.
So I, and just if I could make a comment, this, uh, this draft is put together for our mission and our vision and our values, um, was put together post input from the staff, from the board, from the community, by the consultant group.
Right.
So really, all we were, um, looking for was presenting this to the board and the staff as if there was anything about the language here on this, I think it was page five from the, uh, document, um, that seemed like, uh, out of, of balance with, uh, uh, us as a community or to the board or struck anybody at the board here as, as being something that, that's not what we'd wanna have in there. So I had, really, this, our, our ask on this is just a review, if there's, if this sounds like something based off of the input that we've already had, if this sounds like something that you guys agree with, or if you'd like to put something in discussion. I realize you didn't have a lot of time to look at it, but I guess my point is, a lot of this has, has been reviewed, and this is based off of the input that, uh, the consultant groups already received.
Right, we're only looking to approve pages.
Two pages, five.
One ninety-two and one ninety-three.
Actually, approval of, uh, the mission, the vision, mission, values, the.
Right.
The priorities were as were.
There's two.
Disgust and agreed to at the work session, so those, I would say are not subject for change at this point in time.
So, and that's.
The establishing targets and the work plan after this.
So, yeah, that, you're looking at two pages here, page one ninety-two is page five, or I'm sorry, three of the draft. And page one ninety-three is page thirteen of the draft, defining the priorities. So again, this was going through, uh, it was part of the, the special session that we had back in, in November, it was part of the community survey, it was part of the staff input, board input, uh, for us to move forward with the strategic plan and trying to figure out how we're going to accomplish it. The next step is with the directors and the administration, um, but before we can get there, we have to take a look at these four, um, priorities so that we can take that next step. And there's a lot that goes on behind this, but right now, we're just basically asking, this is what we need to move forward.
I stand corrected.
So, um, if there's a, we really just wanted any input from the board, staff.
So it's an update, it's not any approval tonight?
Well, this would be an approval of the draft so that we could move forward to the next step and start planning for the implementation process.
So approval of the vision, mission, and value statements and acknowledge the priorities, right?
Yes.
Okay, what's your pleasure?
To approve.
With approval by, uh, Feeny, second by Hardinger, uh, on the discussion, hearing none, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, so carried. Uh, any attorney referrals?
Do we, do point of order, do we need to acknowledge the strategic priorities as well?
Oh, okay.
I thought, yeah.
I thought we did both, but then, yeah.
I thought.
Oh, you're right.
Yeah, so that was the intent.
That was the.
Okay, I'll do both?
Yeah.
Okay, all right, you okay?
I'm good.
All right. Attorney referrals, anybody have any attorney referrals or they wanna chat with the attorney? Mr. Downer? And, uh, so now the next piece is moving into closed session per nineteen point eight five parent one, parent E. Uh, moving into closed session per Wisconsin stat, um, nineteen point eight five parent one, parent E. I have to, um, do I have to read every one of those? I guess I should.
Yeah.
Move, move to closed session per nineteen point eight five parent one, parent E. Deliberate, deliberating, deliberating or negotiating the purchasing of public properties, the investing of public funds, or conducting other specified public business whenever competitive or bargaining reasons require a closed session. To wit, nominal payment partial report for establishing initial offerings on the right of way for Weston Avenue East breaks. Move to closed session per Wisconsin statute at nineteen point eight five parent one, parent E, deliberating, deliberating or negotiating the purchasing of public properties, investing of public, conducting other specified public business whenever competitive or bargaining reason. To wit, municipal building contract status, possible points of disagreement with contractor, and stra- strategy for possible negotiations. Move to the closed session per Wisconsin stat, nineteen point eight five parent one, parent C, considering employment, compensation, compensation or performance evaluation data of any public employee over which the governmental body has jurisdiction or exercise responsibility, to wit succession planning for administrator for two thousand and. Roll call vote? What?
I'm sorry. I just want.
Do, do we want John to say?
Yes, I want you also to say who can stay in which public.
Yeah, I think we want you. Do we?
I thought you had more items though.
Well, if you can just state who stays in which procession, so I can put those in the minutes as well.
That's fine.
Just, if I may, a- as far as the, the municipal building, it says possible points of disagreement with contractor and strategy for possible negotiation, so do we need the architect?
Yes, we do.
Okay.
Okay, we should probably do that one first.
And if we have disagreements, we should probably hash it out, and then if there's strategy for negotiations, we can excuse them on that part.
Uh, we, we need the contractor here because.
The architect?
Because.
Because he's the party that is interpreting the contract at this point. We don't know what we have for disagreement right now, actually. And if we get to some point where the cards are, our attorney should be here, but I don't, we're not, we're not there.
Okay, that's fine, so I'm fine with it, you okay?
Yeah.
Everybody else, okay? All right, so let's, let's handle that one first, since John has, uh, traveled or maybe stayed. And, um, I'm fine with everybody staying here.
What on the last, also on the last.
The last one is Bordel.
Just Bordel.
Just Bordel.
I don't think, we just need Keith and Pam, right?
I know, but if you wanna stay, I have no problem with everybody wants to stay. I certainly don't, I don't think you have to stay.
You're invited, but you don't.
You're invited, but you don't have to stay, okay?
Yeah, uh, director would also, you would be, uh, supposed to be a purple. Yeah.
That's fine, yeah, you, like I said, everybody in this room can stay or you don't have to stay.
Yeah.
I guess, uh, I guess, uh, Michael, you have to stay.
I mean, if I were the two of you on the end on there, I'd go to the bar.
Not what I'll be.
I was waiting for the roll call.
Oh, okay, yeah.
For the closed session.
Yeah, oh, okay, that's it, he, he can, he can wait. So now roll call? Yes, it is now roll call.
No. Yes, but he's not here.
I'm here, yeah, he's here.
Baloney?
Yeah, um, aye.
Ermeling?
Aye.
Cronin?
Aye.
Feeny?
Aye.
Hardinger?
Here.